September 1, 2020, Meeting of the City of Oneonta Common Council is hereby called to order. I will call the roll. Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Rissberger?
Here.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carson? Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Rafter?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Drenick?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now tonight, we have scheduled a public hearing on an ordinance which was passed by the council two weeks ago, amending Chapter 300 of the Code of the City of Oneonta entitled zoning. This would amend certain provisions of the Code of the City of Oneonta for the regulation of short-term rentals. Carrie, do we have anybody here to comment tonight?
You have one person in the waiting room. That is the applicant for the Film Commission.
Okay, would you please let them in?
He's connecting now. He can hear you, Mayor.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, please tell us your name, address.
Oh, this is Greg Klein.
Okay, Greg, I don't, Greg isn't here for the, Carrie?
That's the Film Commission.
Yeah, Greg, you stay where you, stay where you are, Greg.
Okay.
Do we, do we have anybody here to comment on the public hearing regarding the ordinance that changes the code for short-term rentals?
There is no one else in the waiting room. He is the only person that was waiting.
Okay, okay. Greg, you can stay right where you are. We'll get to you quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing. My intent is to sign the public hearing into law. However, I intend to wait until after the current outbreak subsides before doing so. David, I assume there is no time limit regarding that? Is that correct?
You have 30 days within which to sign or veto.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, we all know that we've had a very, very challenging week. As of mid-afternoon, we had 245 young people who were enrolled at SUNY Oneonta having been infected by COVID-19. These are very distressing numbers, and we should be aware that they are going to go much higher. The students are still being tested. The results have not come in yet on all the tests. As they come in, we should expect to see these numbers go up. 350, 400, we don't know. Actually, as the numbers go up, the good thing is that's telling us what is, what is really out there, how many people are infected as we are having nearly all of the students. Now, my understanding from Dr. Morris is that she expects that we will, that the current testing will reach, as she states, 99% of all students. These students who live off-campus, who come on campus for classes or any other, or any other reason over the past few weeks are mandated to test. There are legal barriers to mandating those that never go on campus. However, they are asked to test voluntarily. Dr. Morris says the expectation is that they will reach 99% of all students through the testing. I want to say that I fully understand and share both the frustration and the fear that so many people are feeling right now over what has taken place. After six months of shared sacrifice, after six months of precaution, we were starting to feel that we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. To many, it appears, as they say, that that was the light of an oncoming train. But let me tell you, we are prepared to stop that train. Steps that have already been taken, you're, most people are aware of. Chancellor Malatris effectively shut down the SUNY campus, which created a quarantine. All students on campus are quarantined to their dormitory for the next two weeks minimum. They, no student is not only allowed off-campus, no student is allowed to leave their dormitory room. Their meals are delivered to them. It's, it's a tough life for those young people, certainly. Department of Health Commissioner Zucker has assigned 71 contact tracers to the City of Oneonta and seven investigators. This is crucially important because it will help pinpoint the, and map the spread, which will be very effective in getting us to curtail the spread as quickly as possible. As you know, Governor Cuomo authorized three testing sites here in the city. The first one will open at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. They will operate through Saturday. I've been told, or I have advocated for, and I've been told that all attempts will be made to increase the number of days if the demand is such that we can't get everybody in those first four days. Now, this testing is important. It's important for two reasons. One, anybody who thinks that they may have had contact is concerned, maybe not be feeling well. They should get tested for their own sake as well as everybody else's. But the big picture is that we do not have reason to believe at this time that transmission has moved from the college community students to the general population. We have not had people stating that they have symptoms. We have only had one positive test of anyone not related with the college in the past week. So all indications are good, that we caught this in time, and it has not transmitted to the general population. This testing will allow us to try and confirm that. We will test thousands of people in the general population. The more people that we test, the better. So people are encouraged to take advantage of this free rapid testing. You get the results in 15 minutes. When it is all said and done, and we, hopefully, we'll start getting the results day by day, so by tomorrow at this time, we'll have some information. If the percentage of positive tests is very low, that confirms our belief that this is, we caught it on time, and it did not transmit from the student population to the general population. On the other hand, if the percentage is high, then we know we have a bigger problem. We have no reason to believe that is the case, but it is important that we have the data to verify that. So that's why this testing is very, very important. Today, Harkaway College, in an abundance of caution, which is greatly appreciated, announced that they were going into a full remote mode, that they are canceling all classes that are in-person, and for a minimum of the next two weeks, all classes will be held remote. Students will be asked to remain on campus unless, unless it's absolutely essential that they not do so. This is, Harkaway College only has two positive cases, but President Dragovich felt that she did not want to take any chances at all, and felt it was in everybody's best interest, our community's best interest, the overall community's best interest, to go completely remote voluntarily at this time. Now, I'll be the first to say that this should never have happened. And there will be a time in the future where we can analyze and do some Monday morning quarterbacking over what should have been done differently, what could have been done differently. But this is not that time. This is not the time for finger pointing. Right now, we must all put our energy into working together as a community. SUNY Oneonta is partnering with the City of Oneonta in every way right now so that we can curtail this together and move forward. They have now adopted a clear message of zero tolerance for behaviors inappropriate off-cent, off-campus. UPD is now supporting the Oneonta Police Department on Friday nights, Saturday nights, or whenever help is needed. All bus service has been curtailed to and from the Oneonta, the Oneonta campus, SUNY Oneonta campus. And I am in continuous communication with President Morris. You know, the City of Oneonta has faced its sheriff challenges in the past. We've shown ourselves through that to be resilient. We've shown that we come together when adversity strikes, and this time will be no different. And I can assure you that we will continue to, that I will continue to do all in my power to make certain that we have the support and the resources we need to quickly curtail this outbreak and to prevent any reoccurrence, so that we can get our economy and the quality of life that we all cherish back on track. And I'm confident that we will do so, and I'm greatly appreciative of the support that we have received, rapid support that we have received from Albany. They are keenly focused on our well-being, and we need that right now. We need their resources. With that, if anybody has any questions, you know, I know there's a lot of things happening fast. I'm happy to answer any questions. Katie?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I have a lot of concerns. I've been fielding a lot of concerns in my ward. We are undeniably, if not the hardest hit, one of the two hardest hit by this outbreak, and the concern is real in my neighborhood. So just, I'm gonna keep my questions, I guess, right now to the things that you mentioned, just for clarification.
Katie, let me say, questions are good because we can get the information out, not just to the council, but hopefully this information goes out to the broader community. And right now, information is important. So I welcome questions.
Okay, good. We'll be here a while. Okay, so the 71 contact tracers that are coming, would they be able to, and I guess this is more of a request, provide us with a heat map of, like, hotspots in our neighborhoods? I know that's a concern of some of the folks, it's really all of us, who live, you know, in and around rental properties and sororities and fraternities and et cetera.
I will ask that question. I'm, you know, I suspect what I will hear is that there are privacy concerns in doing so. But I will ask the question.
Yeah, I wonder even if it could just...
We lost you, Katie.
Maybe, um, maybe there is just more concern, heightened concern. So, uh, also, what is the purpose of having the testing only available for four days?
Well, I think, I think that there, there is also an outbreak going on in Western New York. And so there's only a limited amount of resources. The state is trying to control a, a large outbreak in Western New York at the same time that they're trying to control this outbreak here in Oneonta. So it's a balancing of resources right now. The testing materials and people, equipment that are being shipped here, that have been shipped here and have arrived here, you know, are being taken from resources that are currently being used in, to control the outbreak in Western New York.
Okay, I see. I just heard from several people that they've tried to make an appointment and they're already booked. So, uh, just speculating that we probably will need more than four days.
Yeah, we may be. Let me, here is my experience with it. They are only taking appointments two days in advance.
That's not true.
Well, that's, that's what I have, that's, you have an appointment Saturday already?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then it's changed. So if it's already been booked, that's contrary to what I've heard, but if that's the case, I have, you know, I met today with the governor's rep here. I let them know my concerns about there not being enough tests, that we would like to extend it or set up a fourth location.
Great, thank you.
And so I will continue to advocate for that because I agree that that's very important. I, I don't want people to be frustrated that they're not able to be tested. So I completely agree and will push for that.
Great, thank you. So I also was hoping that you could, well, no, I guess the next follow-up question for that would be something that I received from a constituent, which is, and I, I would say no, because I'm the city when people say "does the city", but do we have any ideas for support services to assist people who are testing positive at these rapid testing sites?
That falls under the Department of Health. That the county Department of Health is responsible for being, seeing that anyone who has tested positive and has to quarantine has everything that they need.
Okay, great. And then just one last thing for, I guess my turn, all other people speak, is if you could elaborate on the zero tolerance, I know that SUNY had been suspending students based on, it was, you know, the students who hosted the, kind of, I guess, the party that, that broke the mold. They suspended them, and then you had just mentioned that there is a zero tolerance policy, and so I'm just wondering if they've steepened their consequences going forward, or if that's what you are alluding to?
No, I think, I can't tell you exactly what suspension means. I, I do, it is suspension.
Not suspension, zero tolerance. You used the phrase zero tolerance.
Oh, I'm sorry. By, by zero tolerance, it's that you violate, that it will, that if you violate any regulation off-campus of the City of Oneonta, you will be disciplined, and the most likely discipline will be that you will be, you will be suspended.
Okay, gotcha. So it sounds like, and this is just my inference, that the ball is kind of in our court here, and in order to get SUNY to really support us in containing this off, this off-campus outbreak, that we need to put forward some specific ordinances, legislation that allow, that'll, that keep in mind the public safety of our communities that are very specific that SUNY can enforce.
That is correct, and, you know, of course, that also can be done in coordination with the police chief based upon what he feels is beneficial in terms of the overall effect when it comes to his ability to enforce them. So I agree, but it has to be done in coordination with the police chief.
Thanks for coming, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Dave?
Yes, thank you. Question I have is about UPD involvement. What level of involvement are they going to have with monitoring downtown, considering that they've told us in the past that their union prevented them from doing any such work?
You know, right now, it's a whole different world. You know, the chancellor has assured me that we will have UPD support. UPD Chief Jen Filer rode with Chief Brenner last Saturday night. Chief, you, why don't you jump in?
Yeah, Chief, Chief Filer rode with me Saturday night. We were able to discuss some other, besides seeing exactly what we're up against, we're able to discuss some plans and ideas. They have their own challenges on campus at this point. They were quite busy themselves up there, chasing gatherings that were against their policy as well. We've always had a pretty good working relationship with them when it comes to the on-scene stuff, but we're, right now, we're gonna be sharing information and backing each other up as we can. She's been a, a very, very, you know, able and willing to do what she can as far as helping us in those sorts of things. And of course, we've always tried to, you know, to be the same with them. I know there, there, they have some staffing issues as well. And like I said, now with this kind of shift, especially with the quarantine on, on campus, they have their hands full up there as well, so. We're still working out exactly how else we can help each other, and also waiting for a little bit, little bit of guidance from the, from the Department of Health as well.
So it's really not clear what help they're really gonna be able to give us downtown, then?
No, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, a lot of it's gonna depend on what, what is happening at the time, and, and what direction we're trying to go with, with any future initiatives.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Let me get, let others have a chance, Katie. I will get back to you. I'll get back to you.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Katie. Then go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask, after last night's meeting, I don't remember whether it was Heidi Bond or Diane Georgeson who said that OPD was gonna be helping, it was probably Heidi Bond, right? That OPD was gonna be helping with sort of the quarantine, I mean, enforcement, but that's probably a strong word. She used the word "soon", and so I just wondered what the timeline is for that, and what are the obstacles to OPD being able to help?
The chief, the chief is going to talk with Heidi. I don't think you had a chance yet today, did you, chief?
Actually, I did. I spoke to her earlier today. I got through, she was extremely busy, as you can imagine. She was, what they're gonna request from the, from us as a police department is to try, they're gonna give us the addresses of the area, of the, of the people who are quarantined, mostly the students, and they're gonna ask us just to check on those houses, to look for any activities, such as a lot of people going in and out, if, you know, that they're not actually leaving. They're not asking us to knock on doors, which is a good thing, so I really don't want, I really don't think that's up to us. And then if we do notice any violations, we, we inform them, and then they, they take action from there. That's what we have for now. I'm not, I offered support as far as if they needed some help making phone calls or something along those lines, and they think they have the staff for that at this time. So they're looking for kind of, uh, on-the-street, real-time information and any, any, any violations like that.
Okay, and when will OPD be beginning that partnership?
I, I don't, as soon as she sends me the list. I don't think they have it quite compiled yet. And as far as that goes, we can help soon as we know where to look.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Luke, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. This is a question for, for both Chief Brenner and you, and really anybody. I, I was informed today that by a resident on Onsego Street where there's quite a few student houses, student rentals, that unfortunately, there have been some skirting, if you will, of, of the, you know, of the rules we've put out, and there's really been trying to, even though the letter of the, of the guidelines is, is being upheld, not necessarily the spirit of the guidelines, is it still okay for residents to call in with concerns to the tip line, even if there's no concrete evidence? Or if they, if they think they see things going on?
Absolutely. They can give us a call on the, on the tip line or through our regular line, and we'll look into it. If there's, if it's unfounded, it's unfounded. Sometimes it's just, it's, but absolutely, they can, and if they don't, you know, they can send a text message on that tip line as well, if they feel. But if they, if they feel there's any issues, we, even if we go there and we find out that it's actually more of a quarantine violation, we'll certainly advise the Department of Health.
Great, thanks so much, Chief.
Yep.
Mark, Davies?
Thanks, Mayor. A few weeks ago, we discussed doing wastewater testing on our own wastewater. I think Greg talked about doing some baseline testing. Just like to know if we followed through with that, and if there are plans to be able to begin doing more testing in the next couple of weeks. I think it certainly helps to back up some of the testing that we're doing that's taking place right now with some wastewater monitoring the next couple of months.
Greg, are you available to answer that?
Yeah, we have been doing testing in the wastewater at our influence channel coming into the wastewater plant. We are looking to do a few more weeks of that before we come back, probably to a, one of the committee meetings to explain the results and make a recommendation as to whether to continue that going forward. I suspect that we will recommend to continue that. So you are aware, on the 28th, the samples we took on last Thursday did come back with a detected amount of COVID RNA in the wastewater. There's, there's basically three levels, either non-detect, detected, and quantifiable. This was detected but not quantifiable. We're still learning about this. Researchers we're working with at Syracuse in Upstate New York, or SUNY Upstate, are working on a methodology to sort of infer how many positive cases you have upstream, given the amount of COVID RNA in the wastewater, although that is not really defined yet, so it's, you talk, we talk more in general terms as to whether it's detected or quantifiable, and the, the real value of it is that over time, when you have a steady population, you'll see an uptick in the RNA in the wastewater up to a week before you see an uptick in cases that are confirmed positive through PCR testing or other testing. I think in this case, you know, we saw a spike in the college community, maybe it was a super-spreader event, you know, we had incoming population that was not here the week prior. I don't think we saw that advance notice as we, we would hope to see in the future as a steady population. So I think there's still more data to be gathered, both for ourselves at the wastewater plant, also in comparison to the data that SUNY's gathering with their wastewater, and working with Syracuse. I think we can develop a, a plan as to what we do exactly with that data. We've often been in communication with the county health department. I think ultimately, any communication to the public regarding actions that might be taken as a result of, of the analysis of this data should be coming from the county, and we've been communicating with them, and I think they're in agreement there. I think we have a good line of communication going. I think it's just gonna take a little bit more time to, to have any sort of actionable intelligence from this wastewater testing, but we're headed in that direction.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Just a couple of follow-ups here. Chief Brenner, I know you're being asked to do a lot, and your staff is being asked to do a lot. In your honest opinion, do you think you have the staffing to be doing everything that's being asked of you at this point?
We're doing the best with what we got. We got an officer coming back from Academy here in about three weeks to start their, their field training. That'll help. We've been looking at part-time dispatchers. That'll help as well. We're doing the best we can. The hard part is, we really don't know what to expect. We have no, this is really uncharted territory for all of us, and, you know, if it was a non-COVID student return, we know where the busy times are and aren't. We know how to adjust our resources for that. This one, we're just kinda, we're just kinda doing the best we can, hoping that we get it right, and fortunately, we seem to be doing okay with it now.
Do you think it would be wise, maybe, to see if maybe we could reach out to the SUNY chancellor in the governor's office to see if maybe we can ask for, even with UPD being short, to see if they could send down some more officers to help out at this point?
I, I'm not, I'm not really sure how that works with them. I know for certain events, they switch officers around, but I think they're kind of feeling it all over, too. I, I really don't know. I don't know if that's a course of action. I, I really don't know. I don't know if that's a course of action. I just don't know, to be honest.
Chief, if we need help, the local state police, I'm sure would provide assistance, correct? As well as the sheriff's department. I know that the sheriff's department provided assistance Friday night because while I was driving around peeking here and peeking there, it was probably quite suspicious appearing and not using my directional. So I was pulled over by the sheriff's deputy. So I know he was here helping out.
I would, I would say it was the hairstyle there.
He's a little sketchy, though.
Sorry, I can't. Couldn't, couldn't help. Yeah, we've, we've talked to some of the local troopers and if they're always, they're always willing to help us out if it, if it comes to that. We can certainly reach out to them as a resource, as its sheriff's office as well.
I think that's what I got right now.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Dave?
Yeah, is the, do you know if the Department of Health is willing to give us a breakdown of the positive cases by ward within the city? I know it's not an easy thing to do, but it is possible. And that could, at least, I know they can't name addresses specifically, but it would at least give us an idea.
Discussions that we have had so far, their policy is to not break it down any further than the municipality. That is the county Department of Health's policy. We can continue the discussion with them, but they feel that doing so, breaking it down any further than that, it risks violating people's privacy regarding their health information. But we can continue that discussion. Any other questions? Katie?
Yeah, just wanted to follow up with the chief on, you had mentioned that this semester, this student return is different from other years. And I was wondering if you might be able to elaborate on some of the ways in which COVID-19 has challenged your, for typical policing? Just to find an understanding.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Typically, when the students return, the first couple of weeks, we deal with a lot of house parties. We deal with a lot of house parties and, you know, the kids walk around. When we say house parties, we mean real big ones with a lot of noise. We deal with a lot of underage drinking. We deal with a lot of everything that kind of goes along with that and even sometimes underage drinking in the bars. This year, while we're dealing with house parties, we're not dealing with them to the scale that we were normally. I mean, this year we get 10, 15 people together. That's, that's bad news. In years past, we're, you know, we'd be talking about 75, 100, 150 people is, is the ones that were, that were really trouble. And so we're, we knew how to deal. We knew when, when the busy times were for the house parties. We knew the locations and the routes in which they would be walking and going to. You know, house parties start around nine or 10, and around 11 or 12, they find their way down to the bars. And then about two in the morning, the pizza joints are full. This year, it just isn't like that. They're not as big. The house parties are a little bit more quieter, a little bit more harder to find and locate. And generally, the pizza places at two in the morning are pretty empty. So in the past, we kind of knew how to manipulate, manipulate, I shouldn't say manipulate, deploy our resources a little bit, little bit better. Because we knew, again, and even with the bus service going, we knew there'd be a big drop off center city. There'd be a big pickup downtown, another big drop off here, that, you know, that sort of thing. So we knew how to be in that area. Sure, we just don't know. We just don't know where they're going, where they're coming from, or where they're going to be. It's, it's a lot different. And sometimes we have to use our resources, like a couple of the, of the, of the tickets we wrote last weekend. We wrote at five o'clock and I think 5:30 and 5:45 in the afternoon, which typically is not when we're writing those. It's mostly, you know, 11 o'clock at night or midnight like that. So our, so our, our resources allocation of where they need to be is still kind of up in the air a little bit. It's just, like I said, just different, a lot different.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say five, six in the morning because I've been having lots of, I don't know whether to call it later or earlier traffic in my neighborhood this year, which is, which is different from previous years.
Yeah.
It has to do with spending more time in houses than a bar. Because nobody going home at 5:30 in the morning is going from the bar, right?
Right.
So it is kind of interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just, just very different. I, I think I used the term, when I was in Friday night, it, we felt like we were chasing ghosts. We knew there was something going on. We knew, but we just wasn't sure where. It was a little creepy, I guess, for lack of a better word. Just unknown for sure.
Welcome. Len Carson has just joined us. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Thank you for the questions. It helps get information out, which right now is very, very important. Let's go to board and commission reports, a planning commission that I believe is Councilmember Risper.
Yes, thank you. The planning commission met on August 19th and we had, on the agenda, we had five items. One of the people was a no-show. So we had all our new business. The first item was Mr. Alan Rubin. And what he was looking to do was seek approval for demolition of 4 East End Avenue. And his, he initially had planned on renovating the, the house. And then once he got into the house, he determined it was cost prohibitive. So he was granted demolition and he's going to be using the parcel for green space. And this is behind the restaurant that they're going to be building on, on Main Street there. Next applicant was Jean Howland, 18 Bugby Road. And she was looking to install a 378 square foot steel carport. That was, that was approved. Charles Solomon, this is for the fraternity house at 6971. They were seeking a special use permit. They had already gone through the zoning board previously. Some of you may be aware of this. The, there was one person that was, that spoke out against it. Others felt that having this group there was a positive thing. So they, ultimately, they were granted the special use permit. And lastly was Nancy Wilbur, 41 Valley View Street. She is looking to demolish an existing garage and replace it with a 240 square foot Amish barn company prefab garage. And I believe the demolition may have already happened unless I looked at the wrong house a couple of days ago. So, but that's all we had. Any questions?
No questions? Okay, if there are no questions, let's go to Commissioner on Community Relations and Human Rights, Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so we didn't move anything forward. We did have informal discussion on various topics of things going on, both locally and across the country, particularly in regards to race relations. But because it wasn't a quorum, we didn't move anything forward.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to committee reports, planning committee. I think we go back to Councilmember Risper.
Yes, give me a second here. I'm going to my notes. We had a number of items that came on for that meeting. A couple of the items are on the, the agenda tonight. First one was traffic calming. This was, there's some areas of concern where the traffic is too fast. Lodge Drive going in both directions, like Highway, Chestnut Street. So we had some discussion about speed bumps versus speed humps, what's allowed to be used, what's possible. And there was also some pictures passed around about 3D painted crosswalks. I'm not sure the seriousness of those are not. But Greg Matice is going to be researching options for us to slow traffic and get back to us, hopefully, but for the, the next meeting at the end of the month. The, we had an entrance sign discussion on the, let's see. The main sign was moved to the finance agenda. And Len was going to be contacting the Lions Club and Rotary about obtaining a template for their logo. And then Greg can price it out for us to place secondary signs in the entry areas to the city. We had a lengthy discussion about the green waste drop off. This was, actually came from my ward. There was somebody that wanted to be able to do their own drop off on Saturday mornings. But as some of you are aware, we keep that locked up on the weekend because DPW is not working at that, that time. And what's happened in the past when we have that area open is we come back Monday morning and there's all kinds of debris that's been dropped off. And then we have to deposit it and we get charged for it. So we went through a bunch of different scenarios. Chief Brenner even offered to open and close the gate during the day on Saturday. But there was no way to really maintain supervision of that area. So what we came away from it was, is I'm going to tell those in my ward and you can pass it on to your ward. If somebody really wants to get the waste out of their yard, because not everybody has a good place to bag things up and store it and keep it dry during those two weeks lag time between pickup, that they can drive it down to the dump, they can park outside that gate. But then they've got to walk it in and put it with all the other bags where the DPW has been depositing it back there. Water Street dumpsters, this one seems to come up every few years. Casella and Logan's place their dumpsters inside the cages under the parking garage ramp currently. In previous years, dumpsters were placed along the back of all the buildings, but this limited parking for lower level businesses and it became unsightly. Lately, we've had mattresses and furniture that have been left and they don't take those. And so it's led to a mess that the city then has to take care of and pay for as much as $1,000 at a time. So what we're looking to do is get an agreement to allow Casella and Logan's to use the space continually. But in return for taking everything that's, that's being placed there. So it's, it's not as easy of a discussion as it sounds. So Mark Drennic has suggested having a Zoom meeting with the various haulers and the building owners to try to figure out a solution. So he volunteered to facilitate that, right, Mark? I believe I got that right. The Film Commission and Greg Klein is here tonight. He is the, and Greg, correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect here. He's the board president of this commission. It's a 501(c)(6), an 11-person board. And their commission would essentially be the agent for Atsigo County. They would market us as an area for potential filming. They would do this also with film festivals. They're looking for the council to certify them, which we would be stating that they are the official film commission for our area. And I believe they've already been certified by the Atsigo County IGA, Cooperstown Village Board and the county board, but I'm not sure about the county board yet.
County board's tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay. And Greg's group would also be available to assist us with permitting information when a film company is looking to film here. So we don't struggle a little bit. We struggled a little bit recently with filming that, that happened. And then lastly, we had a short discussion on the economic developer position. We're just trying to look into that. See if that's something that's viable for this area, if we would benefit from it or not. Judy was unable to attend that meeting to give us some background knowledge. So we figured there's no rush on this. So we tabled it till the next meeting and that was it.
Questions? Okay. Let us go to the Finance and Human Resource Committee. That would be just in the nick of time, Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Little bit of improv to the, the location that I'm in right now. It's a historic building. And I believe the internet speed is still in the dinosaur age. But with that said, Finance Human Resource met August 24th, I believe it was. We had, what's before you is motions three, four and five. And I believe we did talk about, we talked about Greg Klein's Film Commission and, and planning. So I don't believe that goes under finance, but under finance and human resource, we have before you motions three and four and five. Five probably had the most discussion. That's in regards to the gateway signs. The mayor participated in our meeting. He explained that we now have enough money through this donation to have five gateway signs. And we had already, some of the council members and along with the mayor had expressed concerns for the service clubs. We, I believe we have two. And as Councilmember Risper just mentioned, I was, I volunteered to talk with Lions and Rotary, which I have. And I'm just waiting to hear back from both service clubs. They're going through their, their organization of, to decide what the logos are going to look like. So we'll move forward on that hopefully in the next week or two. Other than that, I guess I could entertain any questions.
Thanks for reaching out to them, Len.
I think you have a question from Katie.
Yeah, I have a question on motion five about the sign. It just says, I'm just off the top of my head here. Any future budget transfers related, further authorized as any future budget transfers related to this expenditure? And I just wondered if there had been any discussion on what those could potentially be? Just so we have an idea of what we would be approving in that motion.
Okay, so if I, I think I heard you, Katie, is that you're asking for the two service clubs, the signage for them, how much would we be looking to spend? That was discussed at length and we're under the impression that the expense is not going to be minimal. When I spoke to representatives of the Lions and of the Rotary, I asked them if they would be open to donating $100 towards the signage. And I didn't get an official answer from either one, but as soon as I can get a cost for the signage, I'll bring it before the council, obviously. And just, I, I could email everybody if that, that works.
Yeah, I think, Katie, I think what you're asking is about the budget transfers regarding the accepting of a donation. Motion five is for the council to accept a donation. The budget transfers would be to move that money, which is incoming, a good thing, into the proper lines and move money around. So it's not budget transfers that represent expenditure. It's budget transfers to accommodate incoming money.
Okay, and so that's for any, is any future transfers that are necessary?
Right. So all you're doing is authorizing, accepting the very generous donation of $16,000 and any budget transfers that result in the acceptance of that donation. It's, you're not authorizing anything for an expenditure.
Okay, great. That was my question.
Thank you, Gary and everybody else for that. I couldn't actually hear everything. Sorry.
Yeah. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to remove motion six from the consent agenda. This is the motion that has to do with the film co-op because Greg Klein is here and I don't want to keep him here all night if he doesn't have to be. He can go home, he can go home and write a story for, about us in the Daily Star tomorrow if we get him out of here. The um, and there'll probably be questions about this, so there's no sense keeping it in the consent agenda anyways. So let's start with motion six. This is a motion that the council approves the following. Whereas since 2011, the state of New York experienced an estimated $29.5 billion in spending from the movie and television industry. And whereas many regions of New York State have established film commissions to promote their areas for this lucrative sector of economic development. And whereas these regions have benefited by the establishment of these film commissions and creating good paying jobs, filling local hotels and restaurants, creating additional businesses and enhancing existing businesses by spending millions of dollars in local economies. And whereas the Buffalo Niagara Film Commission in Western New York State estimated that a recent film shooting there used 12,000 hotel nights in a six month period and caused a staggering amount of money to be spent in their local economy. And whereas the movie and television industry provide an intangible benefit by exposing their audience to community attractions, which leads to increased tourism and notoriety. I'm not sure that was the word we're looking for. And whereas movie making is a clean industry that provides rapid infusion of dollars into the communities they choose to shoot in. And whereas Film Coop, otherwise known as Cooperstown, Oneonta, Atsigo County Film Partnership Incorporated, is an organization which has the capacity and desire to promote our region to the movie and television production industries. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Oneonta Common Council hereby recognizes Film Coop as the official organization to promote our area to content providers for movies, television shows, and all forms of media. It is further resolved that this designation may be withdrawn at any time by the action of the common council. Do I have a motion to approve? Councilmember Davies, I think second by Councilmember Carson. Discussion. And you've got Rick Klein here to answer any questions. Wow, you're getting off easy tonight, Greg.
I am. I'd just like to say I'm not representing the paper tonight. I'm not writing the story. Um, and Mayor, one thing, we're not a co-op. The state was very, very clear with me that we can't even say the word co-op. So we actually, that's why we have uh, Coop as, Film Coop is our DBA and the longer name is our official name.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications, Greg. Okay, um, if there are no discussion items, nothing to discuss, no questions to be asked, I will move to calling the vote. Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Davies.
Aye.
Councilmember Rissberger.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu.
Yes.
Councilmember Carson.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Rafter.
Yes.
Councilmember Drennic.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, Greg, thank you for your work on this. And um, we're off to the movies.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. If I may say one thing, I'd just also like to thank Councilmember Carson. It was way back when he was a county representative and I was talking about this, that he came up to me after a meeting and said, Greg, what are you doing about this? And uh, here we are three years later with a, a fully functioning nonprofit and uh, ready to get to business. So I hope it works out for everybody. Thank you, Len, for your support. And uh, thank you guys for making it official.
Okay. Uh, thanks for all your work on this, Greg. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Greg, I, I look forward to the first film that you bring.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Good night.
Okay, now we'll go back to the consent agenda. Motion one, motion that the council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on August 18th, 2020. Two, motion of the council approves the warrants totaling and that the same be placed on the director of finances desk for payment as presented. Three, motion of the council declares the items per the attached list as surplus and authorizes the purchasing agent to dispose of the same items determined to have value will be listed for sale on the auction website, Four, motion that the council approves the budget transfers and amendment totaling $124,080 as presented on the attached reports. Five, motion that the council authorizes the director of finance to accept a gift in the amount of $16,080 from the Future of Oneonta Foundation and the Atsigo Chamber of Commerce. This is to be used for the purchase of two large welcome signs and that the common council further authorizes any budget amendments for said acceptance. Seven, motion that the council concurs with the mayor's recommendation approves the following appointment to a city board. I know that you approved two weeks ago the appointment of this person, but it was my mistake. I had her name wrong. You approved a Nancy Aronson. Her name is Diane Aronson. Uh, I, I think I knew somebody named Nancy Aronson when I was in junior high school and got them confused. So, uh, so you're now approving Diane Aronson uh, to be a member of the Huntington Memorial Library Board of Trustees with a term due to expire on January 14th, 2021. I am sorry, Diane. And that concludes our consent agenda. I'll uh, entertain any requests or remove any of those items from the consent agenda. Any? Correct. There are none. So then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Councilmember Rafter, second by Councilmember Rissberger. I'll call the vote. Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Davies.
Aye.
Councilmember Rissberger.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Carson.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Rafter.
Aye.
Councilmember Drennic.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The consent agenda passes. And um, we now have received a 30 day advance notice to local municipality regarding a liquor license for the serving of liquor, wine, beer, and cider. This was received by the Sixth Ward Athletic Club for their property located at 22 West Street. Does anybody have an objection to waiving that 30 day um, comment period?
That's West Broadway, Mayor, not West Street.
Did I say West Street? I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for, thank you for correcting me. I would have never heard the end of it from the folks at the Sixth Ward AC. The um, if there are no objections, then um, we will not raise any with the state liquor authority. Correspondents, I have none. I will open it up to any um, discussion items that anybody would like to bring forward. Councilmember Drennic.
Received this um, email from Barbara Ann Hegan as her, um, in her role as Chair of the Marketing Committee for the Survive and Thrive. Uh, and she just wanted the council to be aware uh, that they are currently continuing an collection process, uh, various project requests based on an outline for local talents to uh, fulfill uh, some of the marketing that um, would typically have been sent out of the area. So that's, in my opinion, great. Uh, they're also, um, they'd like to let you know that they are taking the Explore Oneonta website that had been provided by Trampoline as something of a shell uh, for um, the uh, as a landing page essentially. Uh, and then they are um, upgrading that uh, themselves uh, to make it something that is uh, a little bit more useful and they will continue to send uh, through both myself and through Katie Lapari Shu, um, the various modifications so that those can be shared with committee. And lastly, they want um, this council to know that the Leadership Atsigo Class of 2020, um, they just graduated, uh, implemented a survey to share with alumni that have connections to SUNY Oneonta and Hartwood College. And they'd now like to open the survey to be shared by the community as Facebook uh, posts and email, uh, which um, I told them, I'm sure the council is perfectly fine with. Uh, and so they're going to, um, they're going to do that. So, um, they're making very good progress, uh, and um, and I know I'm very pleased to see that and I suspect uh, that most everybody here would be as well. I just wanted to report that on behalf of Barbara Ann Hegan.
Thank you. And, and I do want to add that the um, the Atsigo Chamber has been all throughout this um, pandemic nightmare. Uh, the chamber has been a really strong partner uh, to the city of Oneonta. So much appreciated. Someone have their hand up. Scott?
Uh, yeah, I forgot to tell you, but I've, I've been talking with Danny Lappin and Clark Oliver from the county board and uh, obviously the topic of issue has been SUNY Oneonta. And uh, the way I understand it from Chairman Bliss is that uh, I believe tomorrow at the board meeting, the president um, of SUNY Oneonta will be present uh, to talk with the board. Um, I know one other could, uh, one of the, the things that the county boards really were worried about is the amount of money um, costing with the increase in the COVID cases. So I just wanted to make sure that at least the council members knew that if they wanted to uh, check in and, and, and see the meeting that um, she was, she's supposed to be present for that one. Um, I got a couple other things if I can keep going or?
Please do. No, go right ahead.
All right. Um, I did receive some complaints about the meeting last night. People were um, had questions and they were, they were trying to submit them and the questions never, uh, I don't know, just didn't make it through or but a lot of them felt that the meeting, they've been left with more questions than answers. Um, and I'm hoping that maybe some of the stuff that we talked about tonight will, will help them out. Some people are, are in complete disagreement with having that control group. They don't feel as though it's addressing the city side of things, that it was geared more towards the student side. And they think at this time that it should be more geared towards the city. Um, I just said I'd bring the, bring the uh, concerns up. And with that, I think with everything that's going on, I think, and, and I did write an email to this effect, is I feel that we need to bring the Public Safety Committee back for a while. With everything going on so that the council has gotten all the information and there's not a two week or sometimes three week lag time. I think with everything going on, we need to be at least meeting once a week. Um, for both our uh, constituents that are having issues and having problems. And to make sure that we're getting all the information from our COVID task force, our police and fire chiefs are and, and, you know, in the, and even be able to speak with the presidents of the college if need be. And our, you know, like that. So I, I'm going to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we bring back to Public Safety Committee.
Um, I don't think that's a um, a motion to be made by the council. Committees are appointed by the mayor. But um, you know, I will take it under advisement and we can discuss it more. Katie, I think you had your hand up.
I did, unless anyone has a, a follow-up directly related to what Scott was just talking about.
Yeah, mine was a follow-up. I, I just wanted to say I was able to read through all those questions, Scott, today, um, when they came up and the, the the, the trouble that happened last night is everybody's questions were being fed into the YouTube site where we were on the Zoom site. So, um, so uh, none of us knew about it until, until later on. So I, uh, I'm hoping that for next Monday to, when we have our next control group, we can somehow solve that problem. Whether it's, we have somebody in our meeting that can pose questions that they're reading from YouTube, maybe over a 15 minute period or whatever we decide we want to do.
Let's um, keep in mind here that last night was um, different than what we had planned when we put this group together, as I explained last night. That was two months ago. And it was designed to be proactive, to prevent us, to strategize, to discuss ways to prevent us from getting where we are today. Uh, it turned out that we were in a totally different place than we expected. So I thought that the best use of that hour was to make it educational, informative. There was a, a great need for information out there. So that's why I asked President Morris, President Dragovic, and Heidi Bond to uh, make presentations and take questions because I thought that would be the best use of that time. That wasn't the original intent. And um, we had no clue or, you know, it was not designed to be originally as a question answer period. We had no clue that there was questions that are going to come in. We could not see them. And um, so um, that was a bit of unfortunate something that was not predicted, but um, we will rectify that in the future. Katie?
Yeah, uh, a couple of follow-up questions based on the control room. Um, you had said yourself, Mayor, uh, in the meeting, and I think that you're right, that uh, because oh my gosh, on the social media, man, it's like wildfire. And it's hard to see those things and to not want to engage with everything in person and try to get the right information into people's hands. Um, there's so much, you know, the rumor mill and I heard from this person and I screenshotted this and it's just insane. So my, uh, someone came to me with a suggestion of um, possibly a public forum. Because I agree that information is the most important thing and I, I would also agree with uh, kind of what Scott was saying that he had heard from his constituents that I feel like most of the information that was given last night was really about what's happening on campus. But two thirds of the cases are off campus. Um, and so we really, we have questions out here in the city, you know, and, and I think that uh, last night, um, it was good to hear from the college presence, um, what they're doing. Um, but they were sort of, you know, prepared statements and then the only questions that they took were from the college students. There weren't, or there were very few, I should say, excepting Dave and Peter Friedman, you know, really asked questions on behalf of the community. Um, but I, I don't think that the community's questions uh, were answered and therefore I don't think that the peers were assuaged by the information that was given. Um, so at this point, I would support a public forum, even if it were prepared in a way where people could email in questions. Uh, and then those questions could be answered um, officially by the city, the Department of Health, President Morris, whoever, the control room even. Um, I think that people need to be able to connect to a source of information that they trust uh, and have their questions answered. And then the other piece of that, just to follow up, is that um, uh, when we were talking about the control room initially, uh, I believe I believe that it had been said that, you know, if things were going well, you know, that they would meet once a week. But then if things were going well, you know, they could talk about relaxing restrictions. And if, you know, if they meet more than once a week if necessary. So I would say that things are pretty urgent at the moment. And so I just wondered if there is any, if you see any benefit to the control room group meeting more frequently, similar to, you know, when we had the COVID-19 response group of city staff and, and officials, when the outbreak first started, you know, you guys were meeting every day, every other day. So now I'm just wondering if the, if the control room group should be doing something similar to that, actually. Well, so I guess also, just for a specific example, last night was about information and not strategy. But I feel like a strategy at this point is pretty critical. And so I don't know that we should wait until next Monday to discuss that. So that's where I'm coming from. And so I suppose that was addressed to the mayor.
Well, let me first address the, the idea of forums. Mark Grenick and I spoke, can you hear me? Mark Grenick and I discussed forums or virtual town halls where people could ask questions. We had some several conversations about that today. We're looking to schedule just such a thing. We need to work out the timing and the logistics for it. You know, these things, if they go on too long, it, it's a problem. You really don't want these things going on for hours. So we need to find a way to focus it. What we may do is hold one for the business community whose questions may be different than the general residents. So we may try to hold two separate, one for the business community and then one for general residents. So we're trying to work out the logistics of that along with the timing of it in, in making that work as quickly as we possibly can. I have to tell you that right now, you know, everybody who is working on this, certainly President Morris, certainly Heidi Bond, everybody at SUNY, myself, you know, we are working all non-stop, 14 hours a day. So please recognize that there's only so much we can do in terms of scheduling another meeting tomorrow, you know, or the next day. But we will do our best. Mark Davies?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to double back to a, a point that Councilmember Harrington just raised. And I recognize it's your right to appoint committees. But I think I would benefit from understanding a little bit more what Councilmember Harrington's thought is. If you wouldn't mind elaborate on what he thinks the value of a Public Safety Committee is, part one and part two. What, what does he see as that value, especially now given our particular pandemic? And I'm sorry, I don't mean to derail that, but I think it's just important to understand a little more what his thinking is because I'm curious about this particular concept.
Scott? That was directed at you, I believe.
Yeah, I, a couple of thoughts on this is, number one, the amount of phone calls that I've been feeling and questions and emails. And I don't feel though, as though a lot of the information has trickled down to us in a timely manner that, at least that I can appropriately answer questions to. The second part of this is that since this whole thing has started back in March, until we really started asking questions and asked for updates from the COVID Task Force, we haven't really seen, and we still haven't really seen a lot of information from our task force. And, and now that we're in, where we have the spikes and the spikes going up, and the fact that we have the state coming in and, and stuff like that. I, I've never heard from our, our medical director that's on for the city. I know she's been doing a lot of work and, and she's been on top of it. But it'd be nice to hear information straight from her. So we have questions, we can ask it straight, straight to her. Some of the other things is, is some people are asking repetitive questions to our department heads. Where if they were, if we had the meeting, we could just ask the questions upfront. And because like, you might have a different question than I have, or you might have a question that's similar to what I was thinking of. And by the time we write these emails and we go back and forth, and now we have, you know, I might ask Chief Brenner a question that's, he's already answered seven times, and, and none of us know. Also, there's a lot going on right now that, that's, and that's more than just really one person. And I know the mayor's put in a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of effort. And for us to support him and have, have the information so that we can sit there and give him the support that he needs. And some things that are coming up may require council action now. And the way I understand our city charter and the way that I've read it is in the absence of a city manager, it falls back to the, to the council with a lot of the day-to-day operations and, and trying to give out, you know, the authority for our department has to do things. And I just think quicker access to us instead of waiting and saying, well, I think the board will do this. I think the council will support us. And, and then they go out, then it goes out and gets done. And the last part is thinking is legally is if, say, say that the, you know, the chief needed guidance on, well, I want to break parties up at 10 people because they can't social distance. I need to know that if something comes up on the legal aspect, that the board has my back, my, my department's back. And we as a board said, yes, we'll take this. We, we give you the permission. Then he knows that that came from us and everything will be taken care of from that point on. And I just think this isn't just for this problem. I mean, there's a lot of problems going on right now. And we're getting, you know, sometimes we get tunnel vision into, okay, now we got the COVID spike. Now we're forgetting about, you know, you know, what happens if we have, say it's a tornado that comes through or something like that. And I just think if, you know, and if it doesn't, if it's not to committee, then maybe right now we need to think of meeting as every week as a council until we can make sure that we're on top of everything. And we're making sure that the, the calls are being made and that we have everything handled. And just really assure our public that, hey, we're here, we know, we're on it, we're doing everything we can. And this council is unified into making sure that we protect you and everybody that wants to visit the city.
Dave Rissberger? Right of that. Thanks, Scott. I was, I was listening to everything you're saying here. And I have a suggestion because, I mean, I remember when we still had the Public Safety Committee on the council. And I'm, I'm not sure that's exactly what you're looking to have. Because what that used to be was police and fire would give their reports. And it was kind of a weird scenario on the council meeting where we'd suddenly shift gears and they would issue their reports and then answer questions. And then we'd shift gears back to the full council, which is essentially what we do. We, we dissolve the committee and then we are still reading the reports for a while. Maybe what, Mayor, maybe what you might want to consider doing is we haven't had a COVID Task Force report at every council meeting. And we've been meeting since April, the beginning of April. Maybe that's what we, we need to do is, is have that report, have somebody present generally what was discussed at the, the last COVID meeting. Because at this point, we're, we're also not meeting every, every Friday. It's, it's been, I don't know, probably maybe three, two to three Fridays a month. I'm suspecting that's going to ramp up again. But maybe that way we can make sure that the entire council is brought up to speed a little bit better. And the public as well, since there, we have so many people watching the Zoom meetings, just us.
No, I think that's a very good suggestion, Dave. And as a matter of fact, I believe we started doing that. Katie did give a report or two to the council on, on that meeting. And it, it probably just fell through the cracks as we go forward. So thank you for bringing that up. I'm sure Katie, you know, I'm sure we, I'm happy to go back to doing that. Katie, you want to weigh in?
Sure. I guess it wasn't, it didn't really fall through the cracks. I received absolutely no feedback from any council members or questions, or even an acknowledgement of the report. So I didn't know if it was just another email or if it was information that was helpful. I guess my assumption had been too, that given that we had two council members sitting on the task force respectfully, I, I kind of was under the assumption that perhaps the information discussed at the task force meetings was being relayed in some manner to the rest of the council, if that's.
So what would make sense then is to have, since Councilmember Rissberger came up with this idea, since Councilmember Rissberger sits on this group, it seems that he would be the right person at every council.
That would get me to do that.
To report on whatever was discussed at it. Let me tell you, it's, it's not all that sexy. You know, it's really just become an update of department heads meeting and talking about any changes that have to be made in operations due to any changes in the COVID situation or any changes in the governor's orders that require changes. And Diane Jorgensen, Dr. Jorgensen, just gives an update on basically data that she gets from the national folks and the county folks. But I would also be happy to have Council, Dr. Jorgensen, report at every council meeting. If that would be helpful, we could certainly do that. So, so I will ask her to put her on the agenda for each council meeting, if she's able to, and Councilmember Rissberger. We'll put him on the agenda for giving a report on what takes place at, whenever these meetings take place, that I believe it's no longer even called a COVID Task Force. Isn't there a new, a new name for it, Katie?
Well, we call ourselves the Work Group, the Response Team. I think that depending on the need, the name of the group changes.
Okay. It doesn't even have an official name. So it's more of a casual get-together of department heads to see if there's anything updates that are needed. But certainly, we will make those two changes. Any other matters that anybody wants to bring up? Len, please?
I guess just for clarity, besides Dave, who else, what other council member is on the COVID Task Force?
John Rafter.
I am as well. And just to go into the history of it, both Greg and Katie were charged with coordinating a meeting with all the department heads. And it is very much a, a round robin where each, each function reports and collaborates with others. For example, face masks being made it to be shared between or redistributed between the police department and the fire department, et cetera. So it's not a, it's not a major strategy meeting, but it's a way for the, to have a kind of central discussion between the department heads about doing their business. So it's, and I, and I, I thought Katie was doing a wonderful job and Greg a wonderful job about keeping that meeting going and ensuring everything, everything was being handled. But, you know, that's, and I'm not sure that Dave and I were in a leadership capacity there because it was meant to be a forum, not where a council member was coordinating that. But Katie and, and Greg were performing that service of bringing that team together.
It's pretty unexcited, it's pretty unexciting stuff, but.
Sure.
We'll bring it all, we'll bring it all.
I understand that people are not, that just Dave and I were the only ones that were, oh, and then of course Katie and Greg are here tonight too. So that kind of information could be gotten out without additional meetings.
And we will do so. We will do so. Absolutely. Any other, any further discussion items? Len, go ahead. Len?
Thank you, Gary. I, I just, I apologize first off that I was unable to check my email today. But, and I know that you've been extremely busy, given the incidents, multiple incidents that's happening with SUNY Oniana. But two weeks ago when we met as a council, I believe you said you were going to try and put something on our calendar special meeting just for the city manager. And I was, I just wanted to kind of bring that back up to light.
Yeah, it is on my list of things to do, Len. Honestly, it just has not risen to the top of the list. Very few things this past week or two have risen to the top of the list. It just did not seem like a high priority use of our time right now. But it is on my list and we will get to it in September. Mark Grenick?
Yeah, just as a, a bit of information, the street closures, we've had six very successful street closures. We will not be doing that this Saturday. And I suspect we will not be doing that the following Saturday. I think giving ourselves a couple of weeks while we see how all of this shakes out and see whether or not, in fact, there's any community spread is wise. One of the things that I was made aware of, and social media is great for some things. We have these safety stations. I think most people who've been, in fact, we've had several people actually volunteer here, council members who have sat at safety stations. There is, there's some interest on the part of many. And those include Hartwood College and potentially their students. And on the other side of our current situation, having those safety stations become kind of a part of the fabric of Oneonta's downtown life, where it will be, these might be manned by volunteers and by, by students, by Hartwood and, and State University students, which I think would be a tremendous thing on so many different levels. And I just want you folks to be aware of that. And, but again, I guess the big thing that I want you guys to know is that while we've been extremely successful and we are hoping that we get on the other side of this and the weather is still warm enough that we're able to have still, you guys have given me eight, we've done six. So I'm going to hold you to those extra two if the weather allows. We won't be doing that this Saturday, nor very likely the next. And that's all I've got.
Katie?
Yeah. Well, first, kudos to Mark on the downtown street closures. I've been to several of them. It's always nice. I, growing up in this community, that's one thing that I've noticed about us here that we really love to come together downtown. So thanks for giving us that opportunity over the summer. So I think we can all probably agree that this is not this semester back at school or really 2020 as a year really that anyone was expecting or did happen. This time, this semester, I hope that I would be knocking on doors and getting to know my new neighbors and maybe planning events to help foster a sense of community between all the residents in my ward. But instead, we are in this very urgent emergency situation. I know that a lot of work is being done to try to mitigate this. And I agree with the mayor that arguing and placing blame doesn't move us. And I agree with the mayor that arguing and placing blame doesn't move us forward. However, this situation needs to be appropriately rectified by the responsible parties. That isn't an argument, it's the right thing to do. And under a week, we've surpassed the number of cases that this committee had seen and worked very hard to keep that way since March. This was absolutely due to the influx of thousands of people from other places around the country and the world. And I don't think that we are vilifying the student population by being honest about numbers and facts, it's just statistics. My ward has been one of the hardest hit, which is why I feel it's really important to seek out to my fellow council members. By requiring a night of COVID tests to return to school for all students, even those studying remotely, whether off campus in our community or elsewhere, SUNY Oneonta's administration could have mitigated this situation. I'm hearing that it isn't possible at this point, but other schools, including SUNY Albany, have done just that. Schools have been doing that for other communicable diseases since well before this crisis. Instead, the SUNY Oneonta administration's inadequate preparation, or it sounds like they prepared, but maybe it wasn't the appropriate preparation, gained us notoriety on the national news. Unfortunately, at last night's meeting, it appeared to me that SUNY is not prepared to take on further or let alone full responsibility for the off-campus situation that our neighborhoods are now dealing with. It's then the city's best interest to make some potentially unpopular decisions that will keep our community safe. While, again, I can appreciate the efforts made thus far, we can't just keep hoping for the best outcome as a council. We need to do more for our constituents. And we'll never learn if we don't actually look at what's happening, even our mistakes. And we need to be prepared to put our foot down. So I'd like a respectfully request that the common council consider and discuss several strategies to be able to help curb the spread. So there it follows: a mask ordinance and/or a curfew, not only downtown, but in densely populated residential areas of this city, as my own. A cap on indoor gatherings substantially smaller than the state's current recommendation. Fifty people at a house party with a current infection rate is a recipe for disaster. Even our chief just said to people, is, I wrote down what he said, bad news. I think we also need to consider steeper fines and penalties for violations. I'd like the council to consider formal requests for the SLA to limit the sale of large quantities of alcohol, for example kegs and multiple cases of beer. I would also vote to the formal request as a council of SUNY to send all COVID-negative on-campus students home. And with the spacing by doing so, quarantine remaining off-campus COVID-positive students in the dorms free of charge. And I would also like to discuss the role of rental landlords who during a public health crisis were unable and were unwilling to elect and to break their lease agreements, resulting in many of them coming back, whether school was in session or not.
Okay, Katie.
I'd love to hear my fellow council members' thoughts.
Well, let me, let me just say that that's a whole lot of stuff to talk about in a tremendous amount of detail. I would make a recommendation that that list get forwarded to the legislative committee, which meets next week. I mean, that's every one of those things on the list, we could talk about for an hour. Some of them are legal, some of them are not legal, all kinds of complications. So not that they're not all potentially very good things.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that suggestion, Mayor. I think that in my neighborhood especially, these things shouldn't wait for discussion by a second of the council in a week, and then another meeting in another week. Really like to take that opportunity while I have all my fellow council members here to discuss issues that are important to my constituents. And constituents of other wards who have reached out to me with these concerns.
I'm not, okay, you've got, you made a list there of about a half a dozen at least things, all different. If.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want. Hold on, you're breaking up. You're breaking up, Katie. It's hard to hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to, I don't know. If you want to take those things one at a time, I would start with, let Dave Merzig, there may be some that are just impossible to do from a legal standpoint. And maybe the first step would be, take them one at a time, and let Dave Merzig respond to them. Because some of them may just have legal issues that prevent us from moving forward on them. So if you'd like to do that, that might be the first step.
Sure, Dave. So I had forwarded some of those to you in an email last week. And I removed the one that seemed like it was going to have some legal challenges. Is there anything else that I should know before I bring the rest of these ideas to the council?
Ask, ask me one at a time.
Sure. Mask ordinance downtown and then densely populated residential areas and/or a curfew.
You can probably pass a, as you know, Cooperstown has passed a mask ordinance. There has to be a rational, in order to pass an ordinance of that kind, it would have to be a rational connection between the ordinance being passed and, and its efficacy. You, you couldn't, for example, just say that everybody who walked out of their house had to wear one. So it would have to be a determination that, that doing so would be in the public interest. And that would have some, some significant positive aspect. So although it's legal, you would have to be careful in its drafting. And, and it would have to be passed by even ordinance or a local law, which, as you know, both have to have public hearings and advertisements. And there is nothing that can be done by legislative fiat tonight or without the, without drafting and following the legal process for, for putting them into place.
Sure. Dave, you, Dave Rissberger, you had mentioned that you were looking into another municipality's ordinance?
Yeah, I had the copy of Cooperstown's mask ordinance. There's, there's things, obviously, we'd have to change out of that ordinance. The question I have, though, if we decide we want to go with the mask ordinance, is what are, what's the legal ramifications of having one for just Main Street shoppers versus throughout center city neighborhoods or the entire city? I mean, there's, there's, we, I think we need to narrow this somehow. But I'm not sure what the legal ramifications of each of those is.
We could discuss, we could discuss those. I mean, again, the reason why they have downtown ones is because they have people, people who travel densely as pedestrians in a small geographic area. You could do it from, for example, from Elm Street to, to Market Street, something, something of that nature, in what we classically designate as the downtown area. It would have to be within, again, within reasonable hours. And then, then questions of enforceability. You know, what, what constitutes a mask, things like that. Again, whenever you start doing these things, you have to be, you have to be careful about it. You can't, you can't say that everybody has to wear a red flower on their, on their lapel whenever they go outside the house, or you, or you fine them. So there has to be a court, there has to be a Yeah, but you, you understand, that's, that's extreme example.
Right.
So that's, that would, that would have to be drafted, defined, put together, passed by the council, have a public hearing affirmed or, or vetoed by the mayor. So again, that would be a, that would be a process. It can't, it's, it can be done. I'm just saying it's got to be, it's got to be done correctly.
Right.
So before moving on to the next.
I was just going to say, you know, is the criteria, the qualification is people sort of traveling in groups? I think that most of the center city would be a pretty easy call to include in that geographical area. Sorry, Mayor, what were you saying?
No, I was saying, obviously, there's quite a bit of discussion and debate involved in this. Again, I, you know, I think it's something worth discussing and looking at. There's a lot of issues to be, look, different things to look at. That's why if we put it on the legislative committee, which meets on Tuesday next week, you know, that gives us an opportunity to move on it. It's going to, reality is passing something like this is probably going to take six weeks until it becomes law. I mean, there's just no way, other way of doing it. It has to be drafted, it has to be, first has to be debated, which one to include. It has to be later on the desks, it has to be, so.
We're running out of time.
I know, I understand that.
I will try to look on this, the Cooperstown legislation and try to remove references to Cooperstown, things that will obviously not pertain to Oneonta. Put that in, and then I'll send it to Mr. Merzig and see what else needs to be cleaned up and see if that's even something feasible for us to discuss.
Excellent.
I mean, we would like to move fast, but you know, there's a reason that laws are designed to move slow because they, you know, they affect people in a strong way.
I'm, I'm just saying this, Mayor, because I, if we're going to discuss it, I'd like to have something to discuss.
Right. No, I think, no, I, and I think it's a valid, I think it's a valid issue that is worth discussing and pursuing, absolutely.
It gets later, the longer we discuss the validity of these suggestions. We should just discuss the suggestions. If the council opposes them, that's fine. But I've always been told that I have the right to bring things up at council meetings, and that's what I'm doing. And I really don't want to drag it out until the middle of the night. So if it would be appropriate to move on, a cap on indoor gatherings substantially within the state's recommendations would recommend 10 people indoors or 20 people outdoors.
Katie.
Katie, you're breaking up.
Katie, we can't hear what you're saying.
Monumental spike.
Katie, we cannot hear you.
I think what she's asking for is a cap of 10 students per gathering. Is that correct?
Citizens, 10 people, citizens, indoors within city limits. Until the numbers go back down.
You, you mean like churches, for example?
She means homes, how, people's houses.
How, how would that be enforced? In the absence of a search warrant?
I would defer to Chief Brenner, but I would assume that it would be in the same way how parties are pursued now.
In, in, under the current law, there has to be social distancing unless you're, unless you're in a park, in an apartment. So my guess is that in most houses, you can't fit 10 people currently, who, unless they live there. You can't have more than 10 people right now in a house with social distancing.
So then I guess my question goes to Chief Brenner, which is that, you know, how can we, you had had chief that 10, 15 people in a house is bad news these days. Right? So how do we, how do we ensure, you know, that we're able to break these tough parties? I guess, how do we do it normally, right?
Correct. What we do is we look at the totality of the circumstances. Before everything is COVID, we would look to see how many people were in a house. And if anything had been changed, because a lot of times they'll disable smoke detectors and, and things like that. And it creates a nuisance, and the actual charge is called creating nuisance. Now we can just add the whole COVID criteria, the social distancing criteria to that. So if we have, if we have 10, 15 people in a, in a, in a house, and they can't social distance, now we've got cause to move on it, like, like that. If it's a house that's, you know, big enough to hold 10, 15, and they're all staying away from each other and wearing masks, well, then we really, it doesn't fit that criteria. That's, that's what we've been looking at and how we've been looking at it. Rather than a specific number or a number per square feet or something like that, we try to avoid that. Just because an attorney could cross-examine, you know, just exactly how did you measure that, kind of thing. We try to do it more by what we observe and see.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that info. I got the impression from your statements earlier that, or made it from your statements earlier, but an email that I had received from the mayor that gatherings that you all had in Friday were small. And so I wanted to just, I guess, understand how we define small in this age of.
Yeah, yeah. And mostly has to do with social distancing and their ability to.
Okay. So this is, I mean, this is not our legislation. Right. And so do you need anything from the city with regard to social distancing indoors? Or is that all covered in terms of enforcement by the state?
I didn't, you kind of broke up on that one.
Okay. I'm going to try again. Do you need anything from the city with regard to social distancing? Or is that all, in terms of enforcement, is that all provided by the state?
We use the social distancing guidelines to support the elements of the charge of what we're looking at. So, you know, when the, when the CDC or the state come out and says six, six feet difference and face coverings, we use that as to support part of the elements of the charge.
Okay. So the next thing on my list does not require legislative action. It's a request to the SLA to limit the sale of large quantity of alcohol in our municipality.
I think that would have to be focused a little bit more, Katie. I know we discussed that. Like, our big, and this actually came up at other meetings, I think you're talking about kegs?
Kegs and also like more than two sturdy racks, that kind of thing.
I'm not sure.
Be anything the SLA would give us, I think would be helpful.
I don't, I don't know what the S, yeah, it comes down to, I don't know what the SLA is willing or able to do. But I know that you have to, from what I, I understand, you have to have other permission to be able to sell kegs. And right now, the only time anyone would come to buy a keg, I would, I would hope, is if they're planning on having an awful lot of people over. I know I don't buy a keg just for myself. So I, I think that, that would have to be a request with the SLA. I, I'm not sure how to go about doing that. We would need help from Mr. Merzig, I would assume.
Yeah, the, the mayor, the mayor and a council member, the council could pass a resolution to the SLA requesting that they make a determination specifically for Oneonta or, or any, any other jurisdiction. It would simply be a request directly to the SLA or through a legislator. But again, the SLA regulates the sale of alcohol.
David, would there be a risk in that in 35-year-old men buying a keg of beer? And a 21-year-old person buying a keg of beer and a differential? Well, or not, take, take that out, three bottles of vodka. Certainly enough to get.
Are you asking David Rissberger or David?
No, no, Dave, David, you. But the enforcement based on targeting a population based, that differentially by age.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we do it by age.
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about.
So just liquor stores not being able to sell more than three or four bottles of vodka.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, let us say, whatever you'd be willing to.
I'm just curious.
I think that would have.
If they were targeting what we think are students or people who are 21, 22, 23 years old, and an adult male or woman can not worry about. and an adult male or woman can not worry about that being enforced.
My, my interpretation of this is it's really kind of focusing on discouraging any type of, of gathering, not, not necessarily targeted to the students. Katie, is that, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, Luke. I have never bought a keg for personal use.
Just saying, can you buy a keg?
Not because the state liquor authority revoked.
If they said, no, adults may not buy, that's all. I'm just wondering about the risk of enforcing certain things, like a curfew. The curfew would be probably affecting everyone. It's been a long time since I was subject to a curfew. Just don't know. Dave, I.
Dave.
Don't mean to moderate the discussion.
I, I think this one, there's, there's, there's a lot to pick apart with this one. Not just, I understand what John is saying. It's not just selling of kegs, even though that's, that's a big part of it. But then it does go to know that the, the sale of hard alcohol is, is also part of the issue now. And if we just have a, we need to figure out if there's something worthwhile in there because if we do just a blanket, okay, you can't buy over such and such ounces. I mean, that's going to affect people going in to buy a case of wine.
Absolutely.
I don't think this is a cut and dry one. But do we have a contact at the SLA that we could talk to, to see if this has even been done before, first?
Which is that, is that semi-nesu muration army or? No, I agree, you know, we can contact and ask them about it.
I've had some correspondence with the SLA recently.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, if we have a contact person to, to, that we can talk to and ask these questions, I mean, I'll make the phone call to, to talk with them and get some answers about what options we have. I'd prefer to have a, a contact, obviously.
I'll get your contact, Dave.
All right. Thanks.
Next on the list, Katie?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to save that one for last. And again, so this is something that I had brought to city attorney. Because, you know, I don't know what our role is as a city, but I do think that it matters to discussion as a council. Just the role of rent landlords who during a public health crisis were unable or unwilling to allow students to break their leases for the semester resulting in a pretty big influx of students, whether school is in session or not. I heard, and I don't need that from the constituents, I may have heard it from you, Mayor, that 96% capacity in rentals, 67% at the college and 96% in rentals. Is that correct? So I would just like to hear, I would like to hear from the city attorney, I don't know, where do we stand on that? And just from the council on, you know, this culture that we have here that allowed this to happen.
Not, I'm not, you, again, you were continuously breaking up. I'm not exactly sure what question you're asking me. Can we, can we?
Maybe I can help, David. I think, and I think what Katie was asking about, can we in some way regulate landlords who refuse to return a deposit or a rent when somebody wants to leave because unusual circumstances are causing the student to leave? Landlords say you have a lease, I'm not going to let you out of your lease. She's asking what authority the city might have in doing that.
Unfortunately, the city has none. That's, that's contract law. It, it's, it's, it's covered by both common law and the state of New York and the real estate, and the real estate statutes. Again, they, they can address, the mayor or the, the governor can address enforcement of the courts and the chief of the courts can talk about evictions. But they can't, but even the state can't interfere and say that they don't have to pay rent. That's a, that's a, that would be a government taking where you would interfere with private, private agreements and you were, would be taking value from individuals who negotiated. It would be unconstitutional and not only, not only does the city not have the right, the state does not have the right, the federal government does not have the right to, to interfere and say you simply don't have to pay rent or you can, you can be released from a contract that you entered into because we don't like it as a public policy thing. If it's an illegal contract, that's one thing. You know, if it's a contract to buy drugs, then, then it's not enforceable. But, but, but other, but other than that, it's a fundamental constitutional issue.
Okay. Yeah, I under, I, I suppose, you know, I understand that side of it. I guess I was just thinking about, you know, does the city have any sort of, well, no, you just said that, even if it's, you know, public health emergency to be able to say, you know, this is for, for the greater good of our community. Okay, so the last one, ever I'm going to love. I would like the council to consider a request to, or what I would like to do is to bolster the support for the off-student, off-campus students who have tested positive for COVID in our neighborhood quarantining. It would be great if we could discuss ways for them to be tested, to be sort of taken care of by the school and the Department of Health. My thought was, and, you know, this, just like everything else, probably won't work. If the students who are currently quarantined on campus who have tested negative were sent home and the semester continued remotely, that the students who tested positive in the community because of their affiliation with the university would be able to be housed temporarily on campus while they fulfill their quarantine through both the, the state initiation system and the Department of Health. So I would like for everyone to consider that. I know that that's something that would just be simply a request that we could make, even if everyone thought that was the best idea on earth. But I think that we really need to figure a way to make sure that we are flattening this curve in our community. You know, I have a lot of elderly constituents, people have grandparents and immunocompromised and family members. And I just want to ensure that, you know, the off-campus situation, which is two-thirds of the cases, is being handled as thoughtfully as the on-campus population that was discussed last night in the control room. I hope you guys can hear that because I'm not a fan of repeating myself. Does anyone have any suggestions for mitigating the, the concerns of a large population in the city and two-thirds of the current COVID cases?
Katie, I'm not, unfortunately, you're breaking up and it's hard to hear you. I'm not sure that any of us are really understanding what it is you're proposing.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was going to ask specifically, what are you, you asking? Because it's hard to hear.
I'm using the app.
Katie? Would this be helpful to do, discuss at the legislative committee meeting?
No.
All right, sir. All right, Katie, I will read. Katie wrote in the chat, I, I imagine you can all see this. I'd like to discuss ways to ensure that the off-campus population is being supported as well as the on-campus one. Now, I can tell you what has been discussed so far. The Department of Health takes the primary responsibility for making sure that anyone who is quarantining has what they need. They check with them regularly, whether it's a student or a non-student, it's the same. They check with them regularly to make sure they have what they need and see that arrangements to provide what they need if they don't. The college yesterday spoke about the fact that those that are quarantining have all of the same access to all of the mental health services, counseling services, that health and wellness services that are available to every other student and those are available to those that are quarantining as well. Or is there something specific beyond that, that you're thinking?
Can you hear me?
Not great.
No. Okay. No, no further suggestion, thanks.
I do know, Gary, could I quickly add? I do know, I've heard through the grapevine that the students that are quarantined are being supported through various community partners, I guess you could call them, people that are going out and buying food for them and and doing grocery shopping. So stuff like that is happening. I think we're going to see it a little bit more as the numbers have gone up.
Well, thanks everyone for going through this point.
Len, I think, I think Len has his hand up, Len.
Katie, I, obviously I can see that you're frustrated about this. I apologize. I, I can barely hear you. It's, it's something, it looks like you're in the council chamber, so it can't be the internet speed, whatever device that you're using. Can you please send me those questions that you, you just, you, you asked us? If you did, I apologize that I haven't read them, but.
No, I did not send them to the full council ahead of time because they're going to discuss anything outside of open meeting. I would love to do that, Len. I feel like I have fielded so many questions about a public health crisis. And I don't necessarily have the answers. I think that as a body, we need to be doing something and not just talking about it. And so I really appreciate you all entertaining the things that I just put forward. And I would be thrilled to hear any suggestions that you have to help us mitigate what is really a crisis in my neighborhood of fear and confusion. So thank you.
No, and thank you, Katie. I, I would also suggest that the virtual rooms that were suggested earlier tonight for the control room meetings that might help answer some of the questions that, that you're presenting tonight, so.
So just to summarize, two action items that came out of this, Katie, is that Dave Rissberger is going to do some research on the mask ordinance and have it brought to the legislative committee on next week. By the way, next week is a holiday on Monday. So the committee meeting will have to be moved to Tuesday. And hold on, Luke, I'll get to you. And then the other action item was I would get Dave Rissberger a contact at the SLA and he would make a call to find out what, what is feasible and what is not. Do I have that correct? Okay. Okay, Luke had his hand up.
Thanks, everybody. Not to throw a wrench into things, but would, would it make, and forgive me if I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to facilitate everything that, that's going on. Would it, would it make sense to call into session a special meeting of the common council so we can discuss exclusively this beforehand? That would give us a little bit of time to, to kind of think this over as well as, as well as discuss it further? Would that make sense or is that, is that something that we, folks wouldn't want to do? I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Just trying to think.
If I, if I might, the legislative committee has not met in, on a regular basis for some time. Number of these things sound as if they're exploring legislation. So we're meeting Tuesday, Tuesday night. Anyone's able to come. So a special meeting in that regard isn't probably necessary. It'll probably be the first, there'll be a fine opportunity to do that unless you wanted to do it over the weekend or, you know, in some other, on some other schedule. There's no, there's four people on the committee, but anyone can come. Don't mean to stifle that, but I don't think extra meetings are going to necessarily be helpful.
It's not going to move any faster if it's talked about tomorrow than if it's talked about next week on, on Tuesday.
I, I'll just say as the person who's proposing these things, that I have to talk about them at the legislative committee. So thank you for, I just think it's important. I think the committee process can sometimes just spread things out. And so while I had everyone together, as has been the recommendation since January when I was sworn in, I've brought some things up. So thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. So with that, thank you. Do I see a hand up? Is that Luke? Luke, did you have your hand up?
I, I do. I just, I just, like Katie, I've, I've, I've heard concerns from constituents and I know this has really been a, a way, I mean, in a week, we've seen what we've seen in six months. And I really just want to put a thank you out there to everyone who's, who's on task forces, who's working day and night, whether it's folks on the council and city government volunteers, people of the city to keep us safe. It's, it's a massive, enormous job and I appreciate just all the efforts that are going into it. And I just, I just wanted to say that because I feel that, you know, this past week especially has been, has been nightmarish, nightmarish. And I just wanted to express my, my gratitude.
Thank you, Luke. And I think with that, thank you, everybody. And we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Night. Katie, you there? No, Kaylee. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Carrie?
All right.